Everyone. Can I get a motion to reconvene to the regular meeting of the Proviso-Tansia-Pasco Board of Education? Number?
Second.
Jenny, can you please call the board?
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Papo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteres?
Aye.
Ms. Barbin?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are in open session at 7:39 PM.
Please stand for the flag. Flag of the United States. The flag which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and everlasting, just as it is. Jenny, can you please read the division statement?
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college careers and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comment. The Board will receive public comment from any individuals present this evening who have submitted a request to address the Board. Per the established procedures, comments will be limited to three minutes according to the board policy 2230. We believe that our participants in the meeting desire the best outcomes for students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be archived and available on the district website.
First, we have Savannah Ireland.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Savannah Ireland. I teach social studies at Proviso West. So this is my sixth year of teaching and my first year of teaching at Proviso. I'm here today to speak to two items on the agenda. Reclassification of Assistant Principal Dr. Gottlieb and the donation of used textbooks. I do want to be clear that Dr. Gottlieb did not ask me to speak on her behalf. So I was excited to teach at Proviso because I love working with students. And I wanted to work with the staff, with teachers, to take on the academic challenges that Proviso West faces. This past year, Dr. Gottlieb made me feel like we could make progress on addressing the ongoing critical needs of our students. The reason why she made me feel this way is because she's approachable. She works to build trust with her staff. She's the administrator that I felt like I could go to if I had a problem, if I have a problem that I don't know how to solve. Because even if she may not know right away, she's very resourceful. And she is dedicated to problem solving on behalf of students and on behalf of staff. Her approach to tackling the critical academic challenges that Proviso West faces is to partner with teachers to create achievable learning outcomes. I personally have many concerns about the upcoming 2025-2026 academic school year. But the one concern that's at the forefront of my mind is that Dr. Gottlieb will not be returning as an assistant principal. I believe that her experience at Proviso and her resume has been an invaluable asset this year. The second item on the agenda that I want to speak to is the donation of used textbooks. The organization that Proviso is considering donating the textbooks to is called SCAERS. Personally, I volunteer at SCAERS. It's an excellent organization. They do good work to bring in donations of items that schools donate. And there's a store that teachers can shop at. Many of my classroom supplies, I have shopped at this SCAERS store. And I'm also in the back going through donations that schools give. And so I personally know that these textbooks will find a good home. A lot of them, I went through at West, are very out of date and are not used by teachers. And so I think it would be the best use of our limited space that we have to donate those textbooks. Thank you very much for listening to my testimony. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Dan Stainer.
Hi, thank you. I'm here to board. Excuse my voice. I've come here regarding my proposed nonrenewal. And this happened last year as well. I was requested by the same principal at Proviso West. So Proviso West has been suffering since prior by three years there. And the current administration has been mismanagement and misguided leadership. However, it casts that she insists as a nonrenewed principal and her nonrenewed management team wants to nonrenew some of the teachers, including myself. And we simply do not fit in the chaos. So her bias for my nonrenewal is, I don't fit in. The administration has repeated that I don't fit in. I refuse to provide lesson plans while on Proviso-approved FMLA bell cleave, is her statement. But I did. Prior to my medical leave, and I resent them. And since I've shared these plans, in the following letters I'm going to refer to with the principal and the current superintendent of the board. And here they are again. All my detailed daily lesson plans. It has bell ringers, the presentation, the class participation, student activities, student work time, handouts. I guess it's right here. I don't know who it's been with. All right, but prior accusing me, our principal points out in the letter she shared regarding my performance. Dan's commitment to high-quality instruction and professionalism. His serving is a role model for students, his strong connections with students, academic and emotional needs. He engages and challenges students, and she includes. There's a little doubt in Dan's mastery of the subject's thought. And that students find him to be most genuine and caring for their education and loving. And she honors me in the school-wide broadcast for my commitment. And I present to the school a certificate of commitment, which I previously shared with board. Our district math coordinator concludes in her unsolicited letter of reference. I believe that Dan Sabre will be an excellent candidate for any math department. I'm extremely confident he has the skills and abilities to successfully handle the challenges of today's youth. His dedication and strong work ethic will contribute greatly to his continued success in education. My special education co-teacher, shared with our principal and superintendent. They specifically request working with me again next year, and puts words to paper. Dan accommodates varied math deficiencies and multiple learning styles.
Thank you. Is that time?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Next is Jenny Labash.
I was in the middle of writing. Good evening. I am a veteran teacher of 23 years. This is my sixth year at Proviso. I'm not here to advocate for myself, for my fellow teachers, or any staff members. I'm here to advocate for our students. My advocacy today comes in the form of evaluating the EL curriculum currently at Proviso schools. Currently, we have Sabas, which directly contradicts all current reading and literacy research by not providing students with the opportunity to read novels in their entirety. There are many teachers like myself who supplement with full-length novels that allow T-students to make meaningful connections to tasks, increase the vocabulary, and overall have a positive interaction with both fiction and nonfiction. That's where I stopped writing, so now I'm just going off the cuff. I should have written down the rest of it. I know that there was a meeting last year of Mr. Ashoff and Interance and other board members regarding the Sabas curriculum. ELA scores are directly tied to students' performances on their ACT, other things, and vocabulary, just overall literacy. And the Sabas curriculum, I gave Mr. Ashoff and several other individuals statements from all of my students talking about why they liked the novels we were reading, how they connected them, how they were able to have you know, classroom discussions using these novels. And I wanted to know if that could be revisited again this year. I know that there are several curriculum writing positions available. I might be applying for them. But I didn't know if that was something that was on the board's radar, and I wanted to make sure that that was something that was revisited once again. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Patricia Powell.
Good evening, board. I come to you with some safety concerns. First, our... First and foremost, I would like to come to you with this safety concern that I... When there is an altercation and we need to get in touch with our supervisor, it'd be nice that there's not a pick and choose on who you answer the phone for. If anything, by this being women at the front door, if anybody should come into that door without, and weren't having an issue, there should always be the fact that when I pick up and say, I need to talk to you about a safety concern, he needs to be able to pick up the phone, not pick up the phone when he feels like he wants to pick up the phone. One, two. There's a lot of mismanagement because the fact is, there is no communications. There's no communications between the management and the administrators. Everybody is, we're all scattering at the last minute when it comes down. So like, we found out late yesterday about the testing today. We're still fully stacked here here in the state, but it's just the point being is, we didn't know about testing. So we're scattering to figure out what's going on. We didn't know that they were getting out till later. I thought that it was still a full school day, but it was not. It was a half a day concerned for the testing. We need more communications, not only just between administration and security, but management and security. Everybody needs, I mean, somewhere down the line, they always say do things by the chain of command. You can't do things by chain of command when there's a kink in the link of the chain. We all have to work together to be able to maintain the safety and the ability to survive by ourselves with these kids. Because sometimes these kids can be a handful, and sometimes we can maintain what we're taught to maintain and with. But we all need to work together. It's just not bits and pieces here. Everybody has to seem together. So at this point, let the director stand up and have us all seem together and not everybody on their own page letting us know at the last minute about everything. Everybody has to learn how to work together. And I think with the new board, the old board, you all tried, I must admit, you all tried to get us all to seem together, but it didn't work. Hopefully with the new, we can all learn how to seem together to make District 209 back to what it was 20 years ago when I started. I love this. I love working with kids. I love working with you all. But we've got to make some changes. We've got to do some things right.
Thank you.
Next is Simone Perez.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here today with two concerned parents who have career to speak Spanish, so I'll be helping with translations and sharing their message with you. Their daughter is here, is Simone Perez, and she applied to the MSC program. The parents were recently informed that she was not accepted into the program due to an incomplete application. Specifically, the registration or submission button was not selected at the end of the form. The family believes this may have been a technical or unintentional oversight. They were referred to, they were referred here by State Rep Hernandez, who encouraged them to attend the board meeting tonight and speak with you all directly. The Perez family has invested in their daughter's education by enrolling her in practice school her entire life. And they were deeply disappointed to learn of her non-acceptance and are here tonight to ask for reconsideration or guidance on how to move forward. State Rep Hernandez's office also recommended that they advocate directly to the new superintendent, Mr. Mohib, in hopes of a resolution. And they are simply here today striving for a chance to give to their daughter everything that they've worked hard to. The father included his email on the public comment form that they filled out in case someone is able to follow up with a response. They thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We do have your email. Last public comment is Karissa Gillespie.
Good evening, board. My name is Karissa Gillespie, and I'm about to go into my 24th year as a teacher in this district. Veteran teachers can sometimes be known alls. We can get jaded. We can get stagnant. And that can affect the culture of our buildings and our students. This veteran teacher is not here to complain about the 17 times the superintendent and his designees have visited my classroom. I'm here to thank him. Thank you for holding me accountable and offering support so that I can support my students. Thank you for holding students and parents accountable. I've seen you in the highways along with other administrators, and I've seen you have very hard conversations with parents. I've even seen you break up a fight. I want to thank you for holding admin accountable. In my two decades in this district, I don't think I've ever seen administrators, both building and district-wide, held accountable. Thank you for not allowing us to continue in the Proviso way of allowing adults to fail up while our students in buildings fall down. Just as I said to the last superintendent, Mr. Mohib, this is the honeymoon period. My hope is that this marriage of leaders and collaborators continues and results in greener pastures and futures for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Right, next we have reports and communication from the superintendent.
All right, thank you. Want to bring up Dr. Watson Hill to give our financial update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First up, we have the treasures report. If you take a look for the month of March, we are nine months in, and we have brought in 90% of our proposed revenue as of today. That's a clap. Good evening, everyone. In reference to our expenditures, we have expended 73% of our proposed budget. And are there any questions regarding the treasures report? Next up, we have our bill list. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, Dr. Hill.
Yes.
But it appears that the credit card is still the same as it has, it has not gone down. Is that something that you guys are still working to get down?
Yes, we are. It is still there. We are still working to try to get that down. In addition to that, we are stressing to individuals that to seek out the vendor first to make sure that they're able to have access for requisitions for purchase orders. But that still seems to be a challenge in some areas, but that is a ongoing concern. We are trying to work on it. So thank you for asking about that. Next up, we have business office updates. A couple of weeks ago, SMP Global Rating. This is a rating agency that is the leading credit rating agency that provides forward-looking opinions on the creditworthiness of entities and their financial obligations. These ratings offer a common and transparent global language for investors to assess and compare the relative likelihood that an issuer may repay its debts on time and full. It's basically our own credit rating. So we are happy to report that Proviso debt rating did increase to a double A minus from an A plus. That's another clap. Are there any questions regarding the upgrade in the credit rating? That's all I have for today. And I have a little congratulation sign because I was still, we weren't expecting that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, nice help. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, moving on to just information items. We just have a few for this month. The first one, I'm going to bring up, but it's long to talk about it, the first two.
Good evening, board. First information item, which will be action item on next board meeting, is the student summer IT internship. This would be the third year, or this would be the fourth year now? Yeah, fourth year. Help us offering this internship opportunity to our students. It's been great, especially now that summer school is at East and West. They're able to engage, work through tickets, and really, most importantly, be a really valuable member of the team to help us prep everything for the incoming freshmen and transfer students. So that's 1,400 student devices and 150 staff devices, plus daily operations and, you know, technology needs for the building. So looking to continue that for this year with, again, six interns. Last year it was at $15 an hour. This year it would be proposed, again, six at $15.80. And that would align with the PLCCA on what they offer as well. So we're kind of matching that for our program. Second item is our E-rate switch replacement. So this has come up quite often. It's been going on for years. We're year five. We have roughly, or not roughly, we have $580,000 left to spend in our FCC E-rate funded. And we are looking to utilize that to do a switch replacement across the district. So what that will do is, we spent $188,000 so far. We'd be doing a switch replacement across all buildings, and that would prep us for an upcoming wireless upgrade as well. So we did 2025-2026 RFPs and reviewed them and selected mine site based on the decision matrix at a cost of $680,000 for the project. Any questions?
All right, next is something that one of our teachers in the sorority spoke about earlier. Alex has been helping save my voice. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. Mr. Muck, board, Mr. Valteres, Dixon, and board members, Secretary Barbin. My name is Alexander Ashoff. I am the Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services. Thank you again. Yeah, we did hear Ms. Ireland speak to the book donation going to SCAERS. I myself have also shopped at SCAERS. It is a great establishment there. Learned that you cannot bring your kids there. They're not allowed that. All right, looking at the book donation, again, a big thanks to Jay Jenkins, who kind of led this effort. Also with Dr. Gottlieb taking inventory of all of our books. There were 6,772 books in total that did need to be donated. There was a small financial impact with this of just about $1,600. Unfortunately, given the number of books at our equipment, we're not able to transfer those. It's just not the manpower and time to transfer those. So we're looking at an outside company to do that work that we contracted and got an estimate from, so looking about two to three trips. But this is something very needed. We have numerous book rooms. Again, this is a big effort to go through and just consolidate the amount of books that are no longer needed. Thank you.
The last vital column for information, something we're considering bringing next month, is a new system called K-12 Let's Talk. K-12 Insight Let's Talk is a program that will help us monitor incoming and outgoing communications. So essentially, as I've been here for the past over four months now, I've realized that there have been a lot of complaints from the community and a lot of complaints internally from staff regarding emails and requests going unanswered or taking a very long time to be answered. This is anything from parents trying to call to get information from teachers, requesting information from central office. And so the K-12 Let's Talk system is able to capture all of these different requests that are coming in so we can start monitoring turnaround times. My expectation would be that anytime that a request comes in internally or externally, that we could respond to it within 24 hours. Now, I understand we may not be able to resolve that, but we should be able to make contact with people to let them know that they are valued, that we are listening, and that we are working on this. We can then, as we ensure that within 24 hours there's a response, we continue to monitor it to see how long it takes to get to final closure. And so I've used this system in previous districts, and it's helped really bring about some changes within the culture of the building. And so within the culture of the school system. And that's what we treat to do here, is trying to make sure that we are being responsive to our community and to our own staff. And so it does come at a cost of approximately $22,500, the per-year cost. In the first year, it would be set up, there'd be a $16,000 cost. That would be able to set it up into our system, setting it up into our phone lines, and then also providing the professional development that's needed for our staff. From my view and from my perspective, I can manage and I can monitor every single employee to see what how many requests are coming in, how many, how long it's taking them to make that initial first response, and how long it's taken them to close a response ticket. And as somebody, as a person is requesting information, they do have an opportunity to rate us on a five-star scale so we can start getting that customer relations feedback score. And the goal would be to be at least a 4.0 out of 5 on all of our communications with internal, external communications. Any questions? I'll continue to record. I put some information in our previous board update. I am looking to see if I can have a rep come in and make a presentation to stand in board so you can ask more questions and see the system in person. Next, we'll be moving on to the action items, and I'll bring up the course timing, staff members to talk to their leads. Again, these are ones that will be moving on tonight. The first one is just, I know that Board Member Dixon has done a great job preparing us for the Policy Press 117. So this month is the final reading. So if there are any questions about any of these, I know they've been also placed in your updates over the past few months. We have three pages here of policies that we will be taking in, showing approved, we put into our board book. Next is Renaissance Star renewal.
Good evening, board. So looking at renewing Renaissance Star, this is something that we have been using now. This is continuing partnership, partnership for a three-year renewal. We are very pleased with our partnership with Renaissance Star. We utilize this as a universal screener. So this is something that we provide an assessment in reading and math to our students three times a year. So that is done in the fall, basically at the beginning of the school year, in the winter, at December-January time, and then again in the spring toward the end of the school year to assess where our students are. There is an alignment with ACT or SAT, but I was looking at the ACT now to take a look at those, at the standards that students still need support in within Renaissance. So you're also going to see an adoption ask for NearPod, which is a connection now with Renaissance. They've kind of merged companies to provide some additional tools to our teachers. This is something that's very valuable to us as a district, something that's helped progress monitor our student progress in reading.
progress monitor our student progress in reading and math, something that our administrators regularly use, as well as our teachers, to better assess where our students' needs are. And there's a lot of differentiated support in there as well, with specific tools for our teachers, so they can kind of group students based on ability level to give, again, some more information about how to better support their learning in the classroom. Let's see, yeah, on that. And I did not mention, yeah, we use this also for our Type 1 assessments. So this is something that is part of every teacher's evaluation, as well as our administrator's evaluation, where that is our student growth measure of whether students are or are not growing academically. So again, further need for this to continue our partnership and the renewal with Renaissance Star. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, Ms. Ireland, very good job, by the way. Our science textbooks are falling apart. They're outdated, 13 years old, missing copies. You can no longer replace them, and the digitals of those will stop next year. So now's the time to purchase new textbooks. We brought in several different vendors, and we went with experienced physics. It was unanimously recommended by all of our physics teachers. We did pilot it. We just finished the pilot right before spring break. And one of the great things about this program is you can change left side levels. You can have different experiments that you can do. So if a kid is homebound, he's not missing out, or she's not missing out on experiments. You actually pick up the stuff and do it. It's not a demo. So very good program to go ahead and do. We're looking at books, classroom sets, three-year digital licenses, the virtual PD that's on here is actually for physics and chemistry, and then our shipping, we're a little under $58,000. Next is chemistry. Same thing, missing copies, 13 years old. A majority of our teachers recommended this. There was a little bit of pushback. But once they start using the program, I know they will be ecstatic with it, especially that EL and DL component. That is what's lacking in our current textbook, and that current one is not going to be upped. So Pearson is not redoing it. So we feel that this is the best program out there for our students. It will help every single one of them. And with all the books across the district, three-year digital license, shipping, don't forget the PDs in there, we just tacked it on to physics, we're under $100,000. Thank you.
Any questions about either? Any? All right, next we have Ms. Angela Marino. Talk about the new ELA contract renewal.
Thank you, board. We have talked about Newzella last month as an information item. It is up for vote tonight for action item. This is a program that provides rigorous and high-interest articles to our students. We have tremendously high usage by our teachers across the board. It's used by all of our content areas, in fact, more that is used in the non-ELA areas. There's ELA, there's social studies, there's science, there's EL, and there's social, emotional learning content as well. They provide it in Spanish, which can read the text in English or Spanish with or without the audio. This is a tremendous feature of Newzella. As I said, teachers have provided consistent positive feedback for further implementation in their classrooms. They're also utilizing the integration of Newzella with Schoology, so that students can access this through the Schoology platform and get right onto Newzella with those selected articles that the teacher has hand-selected for their classes as supplementary curriculum material. The blended learning suite and the Newzella writing digital license package would run for one year. It includes six virtual PD sessions, because there's so much that teachers can do with it. The total investment would be $72,822.30, and it would be funded through our general funds. And again, this is something that we've been using for the last four years to provide high-interest, rigorous, nonfiction text for our students. Questions?
Questions?
Next, we have the Renaissance NearPod that Alex had referred to earlier. Sorry, Mr. Asha, that referred to earlier.
NearPod is a new interactive platform that we're using. It was introduced... Good evening, board, excuse me. It was introduced, and we invested in it last year. And during the month of October, we trained all of our teachers, and our usage was very low at that time. But at this time, it has really picked up significantly. We trained teachers in October, and we saw a really increase in usage during the past months. And the thing about the NearPod, it is connected directly with Renaissance. So a lot of our teachers have already made lessons there. And the other thing about the platform, it's very engaging. Teachers may give students quizzes. They can play different games. It's just a very engaging platform. So currently, our data is there. We have, we've had, and this is just a beginning snapshot. We've held about 200, there have been about 250 sessions with about eight to nine teachers that have adopted NearPod. Our monthly usage has been a steady growth in usage. With Proviso, Proviso is, Proviso East is leading in our sessions with 51.9%. And then Proviso West contributes to that about 15.27%, and then PMSA, 29%. Our investment with our renewal license will be $33,600. And I am strongly recommending that we continue to build on this. One of the things that we know when our students are engaged, positive things are happening. And so I'm just looking forward to the success. I have recently provided a plan to Mr. Ashkoff regarding ways that we plan to increase the usage even before we leave this school year. So we have some things in place where we'll be working one-to-one. And then we also have some super users. Some of our super user teachers will be leading some of those sessions. And so I have some swag to present to a couple of our super users, so.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So I have two. The first is, can you define what a session is?
Okay. A session is, in NearPod, let's say whatever that content area is, if it's math, if it's social studies, there may be a social studies session with whatever the standards that that teacher may be working with. There are thousands and thousands of sessions that teachers can start with students that are already ready-made. We have also seen some of our Proviso teachers that have made their own sessions, and so they're out there for the general public as well.
So is that like an assignment?
Yes, sessions.
Or is it video?
Yes. It may be a combination of an interactive video. It may be polls that the teacher may be taking to be able to look to see what that learning may be informing.
Thank you. And then my second question is, I mean, these usage rates look very low to me.
Yes.
So this is our second year, so what were the first?
Excuse me, but technically, this will be our second year, but we invested in this last year.
So last term's school year is the first school year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we did our first teacher training session this past October.
That makes much sense, though.
Yes. So we definitely anticipate that the numbers will be going up, and we plan to conduct those sessions one-to-one, and then we'll have other teachers. And NearPod offers a number of free opportunities for our teachers to learn at their own pace.
So. Thank you.
Pace, ma'am. Thank you.
Next, we have band instrument purchase for Proviso West.
Okay, so we are looking at some additional band equipment for our band instructor, Mr. Acher, at Proviso West. We recently did an inventory check and realized that we needed a number of instruments at Proviso West. We did have this go out to bid and went with Sweetwater, who was the best provider for the best value and instruments and the equipment needed. We are looking at enhancing and growing our Proviso West band program, and this is a desperate need in order to do that. The purchase of that equipment, we're looking at a cost of $56,744. Any questions?
All right, and then Alex, we have the ingenuity or...
Mention ingenuity, or we often refer to it as ingenuity. This is primarily used as our credit recovery program, though we do have teachers, all teachers have access to that curricular needs if they so choose to use it. But they do primarily, we use it as our credit recovery program. And also, we are looking at a one-year renewal. We, this is something looking at possibly going in a different direction, but given the time that summer school is coming up, we are looking at extending this for one year and then doing a very, very close audit at some other possibilities that we've already started to engage in. We have been using this since 2019, but I think as we know that technology quickly advances and changes. There are some just concerns around this, but we feel at this time it is necessary to continue with a one-year renewal. We are all set up for this year with summer school and aligned with all of our current course curriculum and the current course offerings. And so that is why we're looking at just the one-year renewal at a cost of $86,633.
Any questions?
Could you repeat that again, please?
Yes, ma'am.
The dollar amount?
The dollar amount, yes, ma'am. $86,633.
And so this is essentially the backbone of our summer school program. We have a lot of kids in our, that are, who are using ingenuity to recover classes. And we also have a dream program throughout the school year where kids are working with ingenuity. And then we also have a lot of night school programs, other issues, other ways for kids to try and recover classes that they're feeling. So we do have some concerns, as Mr. Ashkoff was discussing, you know, technology has changed. We want to make sure that whatever program we're putting in front of the kids is a high quality, high value, and there's not room for cheating. And so we're exploring other options that are available. We've had, we have had some concerns, but we have also bought another plug into this to reduce the amount of cheating that could occur with this program. Especially as the age of chat GPT, that has made it very difficult for us.
I don't have any questions. I do have some concerns, because ingenuity, what I've found is, you didn't go to class almost a whole school year. In three weeks, you come and you pass a year's worth of work, or the system has been open for it. So I understand what you're saying, mister. Yeah, it has to be something that's way more serious than ingenuity. And I've had conversations with kids that, whatever they're using, they get in and use it, answer a question, and open up the next test, though. I think it's going to be very important. Okay?
Yeah, we want the kids to have the skills and means to go on to the next level of course. All right, and the last action that we have is regarding Melrose Park tip. And so this is something we've talked about several times. I know before I came on to the board, or before I joined the district, the board did approve two tips for Melrose Park. And with that, we engaged in additional conversations with the mayor and the city, and they have agreed to an IGA to provide us $250,000 to spend as we need to improve student outcomes. The caveat with this is that we do spend these dollars in one year for our execution of this IGA, and it is a reimbursement model. So as we make the expenses, we would get reimbursed from the city in accordance with that IGA. Very thankful to Mayor Serpico and the City of Melrose Park for making this available to us. We will bring options to this board on how we can best use these funds to move forward our student outcomes and achievement levels.
So it starts tomorrow?
It's not as soon as I was excited.
Okay, good.
Any questions on any of the items? All right, thank you.
Great. President's report, like I always, I don't have much, but I do want to apologize for starting the meeting a bit late. You know, the session started at around 7:30. We had kind of a heavy executive session, so I apologize for the community that waited for us, so we try to do our best when we sit here, so you guys don't wait that long, but we're getting there. With that being said, I also want to congratulate the newly-elected board members of education. But I also want to thank the veteran board members of education, because I always believe that, you know, there's almost a purpose. Everything happens with a purpose or a purpose, right? We sit here, I've been sitting here eight years now, probably served eight years here, and I've learned a lot here. And I'm sitting here because eight years ago, somebody decided to call me because I was a parent. It was in PTO, PTA. I was advocating for kids at the district, 89 schools. And I sit here today. The newly board members are going to be here in a perfect setting, kind of like in 2017, when we started, where you have, you know, new board members. I know there was, I don't know what the outcome was, but I'm going to say it all. Really, it was four new board members that are coming in in a perfect setting. You've got a new superintendent, a great superintendent. You've got a great board still here. So there will be no excuse not to excel in this next four years for you guys to bring this district even higher than it is now. And, you know, I thank you for voting. I never really got, I mean, thank you for running. I really never got that, but I remember when I first won, everybody was thanking me. I'm like, why are you thanking me? Well, now I know. Eight years later, now I know why they were thanking me. But there's a lot you're going to learn here. There's a lot of commitment to the students, especially the families, the community. And I still have a freshman at Proviso East, so I'll still be heavily involved. We're Proviso family. I graduated from here. My wife did, and all my sons from, two from East and one from here. So congratulations, and also congratulations to our veteran board members that are retiring. Thirty years of service. I think eight years, maybe 12 years is enough, you know? So I want to thank them, because we did a lot together, you know? We argue, we came together, we agreed to disagree, but overall, I think we brought the district to a better place, and we just expect that. We live in those communities, and we expect the newly board members to bring it up even higher than that, so. And that's all I have to say. If anybody else has to say anything, just thank you new board for coming in, and thank you for running. And thank you veteran board members for sticking with me and sticking to about these eight years and doing what we can for the community since we live here. That's all.
We have one more meeting, so stay with us.
Yeah, I got one more meeting, but I think that was more of a special meeting, right?
That's right.
So it's more of a special meeting, so I don't think I'll get to say this, so I just want to say it now. But yeah, thank you, the newly board members. I thank you veteran board members, and I present the board. I can't wait. Maybe I'll miss this meeting, but that would be. I have more time to spend with my granddaddy now. They are my grandfather. Thank you. That's all. With that being said... Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11, 2025 Board of Education meeting as presented?
Salute. Success.
Jenny, please call the board.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belteres?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the April 8, 2025 bill list in the amount of $5,732,225.33 as presented?
Salute. Second.
Jenny, please call the board.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mr. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Belteres?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the resolution for the non-renewal of probationary teachers who are not completing their final probationary year of service, such teachers being... Say the name right. Amal S. Deradi, Lisa M. Bosensky Roach. Such teachers being, say the name right, Amal Esdevardi, Lisa M. Zansky Roach, Danny Stamer, as presented by the administration.
Salute.
Second. Jenny, please call it all. Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Baltieris?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the non-renewal of probationary teachers who are completing their final probationary year of service. Such teachers being Caleri Elsalinas, Paula Ishord, as presented by the administration.
Salute.
Second. Jenny, please call it all.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Baltieris?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to authorize the appointments, employment, resignations, terminations, and stipend awards, et cetera, board?
We're skipping 15.
You're skipping 15, but 16 you have to pull up.
Ah, yes, I'm sorry.
We're going to call 1A2.
May I have a motion to authorize the appointment, employment, resignation, termination, stipend awards, et cetera, board? In the personnel report dated April 25, minus 1A2 as presented?
Salute. Second.
Jenny, please call it all. Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Baltieris?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the content agenda to include the following agreements and expenditures? A, adopt policy update press 117. Renaissance Star renewal, physics textbook purchase, chemistry textbook purchase, use ELA contract renewal, Renaissance NearPod contract renewal, Imagine Learning Ingenuity renewal, Intergovernmental Agreement with Village of Melrose Park concerning TIP reimbursement?
Salute.
Second. Jenny, please call it all. Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Baltieris?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Jenny, can you read the board's report first?
Proviso Township High School District 201 received the following FOIA request. Date received was March 27, 2025. Requester was Walter Brezki. The request was Vincent Rosiola's complete personnel file, salary, work history, termination letters, disciplinary records, incident reports, warnings, and suspensions, documents, letters, layoff notices, letters, investigative files, vetting information, resume, references, employment applications, and class schedule. The request is in the process.
Thank you, FOIA.
Thank you, Jenny. Any old business? Here none? New business? Here none? Jenny, can we call it all for the room? Have a motion for it, Jenny. Sorry.
Salute.
Second.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Mr. Baltieris?
Aye.
Ms. Bartman?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are done at 8:31 PM tonight. Thank you.